I am Jim McCarthy, a professor of biological engineering at Harvard University. But first, that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight in my capacity as chairman of the board of directors for the Union Concerned Scientists and I'm very pleased to welcome you to this town hall meeting. New England's nuclear power plants are we any safer after Fukushima? As many of you know, the Union Concerned Scientists, which was founded right here at MIT in 1969, is a leading, science-based nonprofit working for a healthy environment and safer world. UCS combines independent scientific research and citizen action. Our mission is to develop innovative, practical solutions. We work to secure responsible change, changes in government policy, corporate practices, and consumer choices. We work on a range of important and timely issues, including climate change, clean energy solutions, nuclear weapons, and global security, scientific integrity, food and the environment, and the subject of tonight's forum, nuclear power. For decades, UCS has worked to educate policymakers and the public about nuclear power. We advocate for increased safety and security of the U.S. nuclear power plants. UCS experts have testified before Congress, provided safety instructions to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission staff, appeared on national television and radio programs to offer our scientifically grounded perspective that will help shape better policy. UCS neither supports nor opposes nuclear power, and we generally do not take positions regarding relicensing of individual plants. After last year's nuclear disaster in Fukushima, Japan, we decided to devote more resources to improve the safety and security of our own nation's 104 operating nuclear plants. The primary focus of this effort is the policies and practices of our federal Nuclear Regulatory Commission, the NRC, which has oversight over the operation of all the nuclear power plants in the United States. The NRC is responsible for ensuring that the public is as safe and secure as possible. Our goal is to ensure that the NRC does its job exceedingly well. The public should expect no less. Toward this goal, we've expanded our state level of public education and advocacy work in a number of states, including here in New England. We're reaching out to state and local policymakers who have a critical role regarding public health and safety in their communities and have powerful voices in Washington. We believe that the NRC should move forward swiftly with necessary reforms to solve real safety problems. We're urging that these local policymakers use their influence with members of Congress and the president, both of whom have oversight over the NRC. Our success depends upon their leadership and upon citizens like all of us gathered here this evening. We need to help educate and engage our elected officials, our governors, state legislators, city councilors, mayors, and members of Congress. Tonight's forum is an important part of our nuclear power education and advocacy work here in New England. We hope you'll find the discussion both informative and solution-oriented, and we hope that you'll gain a better appreciation for how the resources of UCS can be used effectively. We see this as an opportunity to meet with other local advocates and learn from each other, how to better argue for increased nuclear power safety in our own communities. We hope you'll help keep us informed of your own local efforts, and we'd like you to send along intelligence about your local activities. We want to hear your suggestions as to how we can more effectively deal with local and state policymakers and with the media. Several members of our staff are here tonight, and they also will look at the chance to meet and to work with you. So I'm pleased to introduce the moderator for this evening's CDF, Bruce Gellerman. Bruce is senior correspondent and host of Public Radio International's Living on Earth. He is a seasoned journalist who is knowledgeable in a wide range of issues, including nuclear power. I'm very pleased that he's agreed to moderate this town hall, and I now turn the program over to Bruce. Thank you and good evening.
Journalist, I think it's a euphemism for old. Let me remind you, if you have authority, please turn off your cell phones or down so that they don't ring or buzz. It was 26 years ago exactly today that Chernobyl happened, and it was 33 years ago last month that Three Mile Island happened, and it was, of course, a year and a month ago that Fukushima Daiichi happened. And I have a problem every time I'm reporting these things because I keep on saying they were accidents, and sometimes I'll resort to disasters, but you know, it doesn't, first of all, they weren't accidents, and disasters doesn't, you know, it's like, oops, spilled that. It's, I, they're a failure of imagination. Who could have imagined these, this series of weird events happening, both human and technological? So, ah, I think it's for you, Ray. You know, who could conceivably imagine these things, and yet, we have to imagine these things because that's the job of the NRC, at least they have to. And it's the job of me to report on them, and it's the report of these three major, four major, the ones on the side of the NRC to make sure that they do have the imagination to do their jobs. So tonight, what we're going to do, it's my job as basically timekeeper and facilitator to, I'll tell you the format, and I'm going to keep these thorns in their respective time places, and we'll move the conversation around. We're going to have a short introduction from each one in their turn, and then we'll have a general discussion back and forth, and I'm going to invite you at that point to get involved in the conversation. Okay, and I'll come to you with a microphone. I'm going to ask that you please keep your remarks short and sweet, no soapboxing and no pontificating. We really are here to exchange ideas and learn from each other. Okay? So with that, let me introduce very briefly each one, I'll just give their name and a little bit of identification, and then in their turn, I will give a more broad understanding of their backgrounds. So we have Mary Lampert. Mary, there's Mary. And Mary's involved in Pilgrim. Debbie Grinnell, hello Debbie. She's involved in Seabrook. Ray Shattis is involved with Vermont Yankee and Seabrook. And of course, David Lockdown, who's the director of UCS Nuclear Safety Project. Let's start with Debbie. You look like one. I know Debbie briefly because we met and I did a story with her help, and she is unbelievable. I don't know if anyone knows Debbie here, but one woman against an entire nuclear power plant, and I'm not sure what generates more energy. Mary Lampert is the founder and director of Pilgrim Watch, a nonprofit organization that serves the public interest on issues regarding the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station located in Pilgrim, Massachusetts. The organization's focus is solely on achieving measures to better protect public health and safety. Mary represents Pilgrim Watch pro se in the adjudication process regarding Energy's license application to extend operation at Pilgrim to 2032. How old would Pilgrim be in 2032?
It'd be 60. Ten years younger than I.
The legal proceedings began in 2006 and is going on to this very day, the longest fight in relicensing in the country. Mary's been very active in her own community of Duck Spray, Massachusetts, which is just a short wave from the power station. I think you can almost see her here in the house if I remember correctly. And she's chaired the town-appointed Nuclear Advisory Committee for two decades. Mary Lampert. So Mary, we have three or four minutes here just to tell us what your major issues are, your perspective on Pilgrim and the NRC.
We started out with the introduction saying the Union Concerned Scientists' focus is to have the Nuclear Regulatory Commission do a good job. NRC, committee stands for at present, no real concern. No real concern for our safety, but considerable concern for the bottom line, nor the name of concern for their own, their rules for licensing. Just this week, the NRC staff has asked the commission to pick the winner, Energy, and call the relicensing game over, although all the players are still on the field, which means a precedent that they can call Seabrook tomorrow if in fact, commission goes forward. There are a lot of safety concerns at Pilgrim. The orders that have been issued two days riddle around the edges and do not get at the heart and the meat of the problem. So, and Fukushima happened here, the Pilgrim Station, you bet, unless the regulators decide to regulate toward change, which means political actions by us, and the rules, they don't just have to enforce them, they have to make some more rules to adjust to what we have learned. If we don't learn from yesterday's mistakes, we are bound to repeat them, and the consequences are simply to great.
Let me ask you, Mary, very briefly here, the Pilgrim Plant is the same model, same type of reactor as in Fukushima?
Yes, and that is based also for Vermont Yankee, and these reactors are, in my opinion, an accident waiting to happen unless serious fixes are addressed, which I'm afraid would cost too much money. That's what I'm afraid of. And I do not believe or have not seen indications to date that the NRC has shown interest in requiring the fixes that are necessary. Now, I sound, maybe I've had a black cloud over my head for too long, but we're here to have an honest discussion.
Let me ask you a follow-up question briefly. Am I right or wrong, there are more new extended nuclear fuel rods in the suspended fuel tanks in Pilgrim than there are at Fukushima?
Fukushima had about 1,500. Pilgrim's pool was designed for 880. They currently have 3,200, and Energy has no intention of getting that pool back as it should be, the low-density, open-frame design. They only intend to take out the requisite number to squeeze in the next down-low unless required to do so. And what would be the consequences according to studies by the Attorney General if in fact, there were a fire? Water would gloss up to $480 billion, and 24 latent cancers, $480,000 billion. That's how much yesterday.
Let's turn to Ray Shattis. Ray Shattis, in 1979 and 1980, together with his wife, Pat, led the nation's first initiative referendum to close an operating nuclear power station, that was the one at Maine Yankee, a plant that was just eight years in operation. In 1995, Ray founded Friends of the Coast Opera opposing nuclear pollution, which was instrumental in closing of the Maine Yankee and directly involved in the plant's decommissioning. Today, Ray serves as a consulting technical advisor to the Vermont-based New England Coalition on Nuclear Promotion, which has been in the realm for like 40-some-odd years, perhaps?
It's 1971.
And it's the only intervener to engage in litigation on both state and federal levels on the Vermont Yankee's licensing. He's presently representing both Friends of the Coast and he sees as the sole interveners in the Seabrook station's re-licensing. Mr. Shattis.
I was hired in 1997 by New England Coalition. I had been trustee for many years, but I was hired on as a technical advisor and tasked with throwing out safety issues and environmental issues at New England's nine nuclear stations, and then binding these to address those issues, whether through litigation or through attempting to coerce the Nuclear Regulatory Commission into doing its job or in various state regulatory venues. At that time, we had one of the nine nuclear stations, Millstone One in Safestore, other words, moth fault. It's a multi-unit site, and it really doesn't pay to decommission and try to clean them up radiologically if you have other plants operating on-site and, as we call it technically, cracking up the site. So that one was closed. The Yankee Row, which was the darling of the Eisenhower Adams for Peace program, was also closed. UCS and New England Coalition had focused public and regulatory attention on the fact that its reactor vessel, the great iron cauldron that holds the nuclear fuel, was embritled by neutron bombardment. Their own experts in testimony said that if they ever had to turn on their emergency core cooling system, it was likely that the reactor vessel would fracture like glass. Maine Yankee had shut down, was going into decommissioning. Connecticut Yankee had shut down and was going into decommissioning. All of the plants in New England that at that time had shut down and were either in Safestore or in decommissioning had been shut down in advance of the end of their licensed So the outliers at this point are Pilgrim and Vermont Yankee, where the intent is to run the plants beyond the end of their licensed lifetime. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission's position is that the 40-year lifetime was really chosen because of financial interests and that it really bore no relationship to the aging factors or condition of the reactors themselves, which is of course not true. When the originally 35-year license, then advanced 40-year license was decided on, the builders, owner-operators of those reactors, went out and ordered parts, substantial parts, with a 40-year design life. So Vermont Yankee's reactor vessel, for example, was certified by its builders, Chicago Ridge and Iron, for a 40-year design life. And if you look down through the full spectrum of components, systems, structures and components in these plants, you find that a major portion of the plant has a 40-year design life. So we're in essence now, since March, whatever, 22nd, 2012, over in Vermont, we're running on borrowed time. The other thing besides relicensing that the industry undertook, that in the mid-1980s, when they realized that there were going to be no new reactor licenses, in order to resuscitate the industry, they basically got together with NRC and said, how can we squeeze more power longer out of these reactors for a longer period? And so the answer, of course, is relicensing, let's run them longer. And then also, is there any margin for running them with more heat, more heat energy, more fuel? Burn more fuel. You create more heat, you create more steam, you get more power out of them. Can we increase the efficiency of them in any way? And that led to the process called power upgrades. Both Pilgrim and Seabrook have minor power upgrades. Vermont Yankee was granted, over our strenuous objections, a 20% power upgrade. So that's kind of what we're faced with. We have a company with a strangely loose corrective action program with a very, very poorly done maintenance program. The cooling tower structures at Vermont Yankee, for example, were certified for 50 years of life. This is a cooling tower institute approximation of how long they would last. Well, they fell down a few years ago. Literally, literally began to fall apart because the entire structure is, I'm sorry, is what it is. It's twisting slowly in the wind, which in their case undid a five-foot diameter header pipe within the cooling towers and dumped a humongous amount of water on the cooling tower deck and collapsed one whole section of it.
It's interesting that you use that expression. Who was it that said it would shatter like a glass?
This was actually an NRC staffer in the proceeding on that.
Well, it's really interesting because Westinghouse has a new design for a reactor called the AP-1000, which is a new generation of passive reactors, passive safety reactors, which the chief, I can't remember his name, Dr. Lee, I think, of the NRC just said last year that it would shatter like a glass cup cup. Those are the exact words. So there's nothing new under the surface.
What's wrong with a design that has a swimming pool on the roof? I want to know. I mean, Holiday Inn could do well to emulate the nuclear industry on that one. The passive design, by the way, has to be triggered.
And we haven't talked about, you mentioned the trigger, I mean, we haven't talked about the state's lawsuit and all that. We'll get into that. Debbie Grinnell, and we're going up the coast. She serves as the research manager and was a founding board member of the C-10 Foundation based in Newburyport, Massachusetts, which was formed as a direct result of the NRC's issuing the Seabrook station a license to be operated in 1990. C-10 was initially formed as a watchdog group to monitor the health and safety impact of Seabrook's operation as a primary mission, but in the absence of this, I just found out today, I didn't know this, in the absence of either federal or state real-time radiation monitoring systems, they stepped in and created their own system to monitor the area. They did tests before it started, and they've continued today. So today, they have 20 years of radiation level database, 16 computerized monitoring sites for future study. C-10 also monitors Seabrook's on-site operational issues and the NRC inspections of Seabrook to investigate all serious plant issues and advocate public safety and data. Debbie Grinnell, look.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking UCS for including the C-10 Foundation, all of us, in this important C-10 is a peculiar story in that although the plant went online in 1990, the plant was built under a structural code from 1965. The plant was actually under construction in the 70s, and a great deal of the construction work was curtailed, it was stopped. There were several utilities involved, and we had some bankruptcy issues. So the concern over the actual construction at Seabrook has always been something that our group has tracked and maintained the records from the construction period, and also there was an employee legal project with several whistleblower allegations that were very well investigated. They were investigated independently through a very credible technology group. And also, the NRC was then required to substantiate the allegations. So this is a plant that began operation in 1990, has now requested a license renewal very prematurely to 2050, when we know that there had been long-term issues at Seabrook, and one of which has never been abated and continues right from the start of construction. Seabrook is built in a Salt March, and it had huge issues with water infiltration, groundwater infiltration, hearing the concrete pores. And they devised de-watering wells and a protective membrane, which through the documentation we know was ruptured before the plant even went online. And when they abandoned the de-watering wells at the point of actually moving into the buildings, the groundwater went through the cement. So in the 1980s, in 1983, they had companies come in and repair the concrete with something called bandex CP compound. No one really knew how long these would last or how far the crystalline gel would move through the concrete. And the NRC deemed this an unresolved safety issue in the 1980s. We now have a plant in the year 2012 who has a new finding that is severe and extensive, and it involves the concrete. And it's not a huge surprise to us after three years of groundwater infiltration that there's been early deterioration of Seabrook's foundation. In the last year and a half, it has now blossomed from a concern for a safety-related building that was a seismic category-one building, a control building, can't operate a plant without it, and an electrical vault that carried cables that are for emergency feedwater, which is certainly critical. It then blossomed into realizing that all of the power-blocked buildings, the containment buildings, the waste processing buildings, the diesel generator buildings, the buildings that are all very closely connected were all affected by the foundation. So this has become a serious problem, and it has been interesting to watch the NRC's response to this because when Nextera, the owners of Seabrook, applied for their application, they did not inform the NRC that they already knew they had confirmed testing of ASMR concrete in their control building, and the tests had come back and reflected that there was a 21% decrease in the compression strength of the concrete and a 47% decrease in the elasticity.
How did you find that? How did you find, did you find that out, or did the NRC tell you?
We found it out much later, but I think it's critical to know the timeline here because in actuality, Seabrook applied for a relicence knowing this condition but not including it into their application. And this is a clear violation of federal law. This is a violation of Tennessee of our 50.9. This is a violation of Tennessee of our 50.9. They are to submit a full and complete application identifying all adverse conditions and their plan to manage them. So they not only didn't include it in their application, they also did not include it immediately into a structural monitoring program. And then we found out subsequently that there were a great many things that were never monitored in the structural monitoring program for the last 20 years. So we now have a plant that has a condition. We don't know the genesis, we don't know the extent, we don't know the rate. And so we're looking to see what the NRC is doing about this. And what we find is that unfortunately, as it's a new discovery in the industry, the industry has notified all nuclear plants, all 103 of our nuclear plants, that there's this new condition. But we don't have, in our guidance at the NRC, any technical basis or guidance to know what to do with it. We also have an industry that, the nuclear industry, does not have guidance on this. So we're really looking for solutions, and whatever the industry is projecting as a solution is now having to be very carefully considered by the NRC because the standards that have been used for concrete have largely been used for the actual construction phase, for the pore and the mixes that are used in construction, and the ways to mitigate aggregates that might be forming in them.
So Nextera, which owns and operates the plant, what has been the sanctions from the NRC or fines for their failure to report the ASR comprehension during their application?
They did not cite them for the violation of not including it in their application, and it's been sort of carefully concealed in terms of the timeline. What they have done is cite the plant because they were obligated to show with this degraded condition that the plant was operable and that it was not affecting the structural integrity of the buildings. And in doing those calculations, the NRC questioned a year after they were done, after the plant told them that the plant was operable and they were operating within design basis, that the calculations were flawed, and they asked for internal help. The NRC asked their technical division to look carefully at the calculations, found them flawed. And to our surprise, we found that Nextera did not use the degraded concrete, which was the purpose of doing an operability determination of structural integrity. They used concrete that was not degraded in their calculations, and there were several other criteria that they did not include. So this was a very incompetent and cited, the NRC did cite them for this, but they cited them for a very low insignificant safety claim because they did it late, and then when they did it, they did it wrong. And I'm sad to say that I've just been to Washington to attend an NRC hearing on this. And although they have researchers who are struggling with the proposals that Nextera is providing them for testing and to find solutions to develop replicas so they can see if they can try to figure out what the rate of progression would be, they're not under federal code. So we really have a regulatory body that's struggling internally with their own research staff to come up with, and they're certainly tapping other industries to try to come up with criteria. And they're also in a position of not being able to judge whether the industry's solutions are, because there are no standards, are going to be adequate.
We should say, though, that the NRC finally tonight, after many requests, I think Congressman Marky had a request, a meeting, the town hall meeting at Seabrook, tonight that is happening, am I right?
Yes, it is happening.
Let me introduce David Lock, your power expert. He's director of UCS's Nuclear Safety Project. He monitors ongoing safety issues at U.S. reactors, which there are 104. Testifies before Congress and the NRC Commission, and occasionally talks to people like me and tells me what I need to know about things nuclear. He is a nuclear engineer by training. David worked at a nuclear power plant for 17 years, including many of the GE Mark I-type reactors that was at the Fukushima plant. He left the industry in the early 1990s after blowing the whistle on unsafe practices and joined UCS in 1986. He then left for the year 2009 to work for the NRC in Tennessee as a reactor technology instructor, and then came back to UCS where he is today. He's the author of numerous reports, including the one that just came out about Fukushima and, what was the exact title of that? I heard it down here.
When you're after, they were safety when you're after Fukushima.
There you go. David?
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you for coming out and sharing this evening with us. I've had the pleasure of working for UCS in that role for over 15 years now. Bob Pollard, my predecessor, worked in that job for 20 years, so I'm a rookie so far. We learned three things. I wanted to share three things we learned over those 35-plus years. We actually learned more than three things, but I wanted to share those three things I think are relevant to the discussion this evening. UCS complained a lot over those 35 years about safety problems at operating plants. Most of the time, when we're whining about a safety problem at some plant, it was because the safety regulations established by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission simply weren't being met. There were some times that we complained about something because we felt the safety levels were not sufficient and the safety standards needed to be raised to protect workers and the public. But most of the time, we were concerned because the NRC's own regulations simply weren't being met. An example of the safety regulation that's not being met are the NRC's fire protection regulations. They were adopted by the agency in May of 1980 as a result of a fire at the Browns Ferry Plant in Alabama. That fire wiped out the cables for the safety systems, all the safety systems on Unit 1, and most of those safety systems on Unit 2. It was very heroic operator actions that day that prevented two meltdowns. Four or three decades later, there are 47 reactors in the United States that don't meet those fire protection regulations, including the three reactors at Browns Ferry. An example of the other kind, where we figure the regulations are just not adequate to deal with the hazard, involves spent fuel storage at nuclear power plants, particularly those like Pilgrim. They're currently stored in spent fuel pools several floors above ground level in not very robust containment structures protected by one non-safety system with no backups other than luck. They can be easily taken out. There's more fuel in the spent fuel pools than is in the reactor pore. It's protected by fewer barriers, fewer safety systems, and fewer tests and inspections. So that's a problem we figure the NRC is not doing enough about and will result here at risk. In 1982, Pilgrim's owners had to sign a contract with the federal government for the federal government to take that fuel beginning in 1998. To date, under that contract, the federal government has collected billions of dollars of your ratepayer money. So far, they've accepted not a single fuel bottle from any plant anywhere. So they've taken your money and given you higher risk in return. That needs to be fixed. Second thing we learned was that plant owners don't necessarily sacrifice safety better to boost their bottom lines. What we found is just the opposite. The safest plants in the country, according to our analysis, are also the lowest-cost electricity producers. The reason they do that is good management that keeps their eye on safety, which allows them to also keep a good control over the bottom line. So it's not a choice between safety and financials, it's a choice between safe financially economical plants and unsafe uneconomical plants. We don't know why anybody picks that second choice. The third thing we learned, I think you've seen some tonight, is that people can make a huge difference. Individuals can make a big difference in this despite the resources disparity between the public and the plant owners. I've had the pleasure of working with Ray and Debbie and Mary for a long time. The first public appearance I ever made for UCS was November 13, 1996, at an event Ray had up there, made, yeah, up in Maine. I've won the award since then, but that was the beginning for me, and I've always appreciated that and working with Debbie and Mary as well. These people and others like them across the country who unselfishly work on these safety issues, they don't do it for money. They definitely don't do it for money. They don't do it for ego satisfaction, they do it for their families and their communities, and their efforts have paid dividends. They improve safety across the country, time and again. So would Debbie, or Mary, or Ray contact me for help? It's almost impossible to say no when they're working so unselfishly on so many people's behalf. It's also rewarding to me to work with them and achieve those outcomes. Thank you.
So in your report card, a year after Fukushima, you identified 15 year misses, two of them at Pilgrim, and one of them, our conversation, I'll watch it in the heat of the audience, because this was one with a power surge. What was happening there?
Pilgrim was restarting last year for a scheduled refueling outage. The operators are starting up the plant. In doing so, they withdraw control rods, which are basically the brake on the nuclear engine. So they're slowly letting off the brake to allow the power output of the plant to slowly come up to speed. As they're doing that, they have to heat up the plant and the water that cools the reactors because it's relatively cold temperature. They can't heat up that water too fast for the problems that Ray alluded to. As metal expands and contracts due to temperature increases and decreases, it can become over-stressed and break. So there's a limit on how fast that water can increase. The operators withdrew some control rods, tried to pick up the power level. They saw the temperature rising according to a computer, well above what that heat-up rate was. So their corrective action was to re-insert the control rods. Now the power increase wasn't occurring at all, the temperature was staying stable, which doesn't help the startup. So they withdrew those control rods again and a few others. Now the power was doubling, the power of the reactor was doubling every 20 seconds. This is a 108-ton reactor pore that's doubling every 20 seconds. I worked at Browns Ferry, which is a sister plant to Pilgrim, and I saw that reactor pore double every five seconds for a short while. It's not pleasant, it's not something you try to do. They lost control of the reactor, the safety systems automatically kicked in and tilted the machine, game over. The reactor automatically shut down, and they had to try again. I used to teach NRC inspectors reactor startups in a simulator like Pilgrim. These were instructors who hadn't received training, they were going through the training the first time. I didn't have those individuals make that rookie year. So it's very hard to believe that seasoned, trained operators at Pilgrim would make such a foolish error. What they should have done when they pulled the control rods the first time was absolutely nothing. Because they just withdrawn control rods, power did go up for a short period of time, the temperature of the water did go up, but if they didn't continue moving the control rods, it wouldn't increase at that same rate. They should have just sat back and done nothing. Other than this, nuclear power hokey pokey, increase power, reduce power, increase power, boost control, game over. And it's baffling that they would do that in this day and age.
So please switch gears slightly and ask you a very quick question. NRC, is it better today, better required since Fukushima to deal and prevent these types of accidents, disasters, or worse, unsafe?
Well, it's a hard one. They're better in many respects. The task force report that came out of the NRC's own task force last June identified 34 things to reduce the vulnerability of a Fukushima-type accident in the United States. For the most, we have a few things here and there we'd like to add to that, but for the most part, that's a very solid list of things to reduce vulnerabilities of U.S. reactors. That's on the plus side. The downside of that is the pace at which they make those reforms. Safety IOUs protect no one. So until those lessons learned are actually implemented behind us instead of on the road ahead, if they can't get an A grade on just laying out a plan, it's the completion of that plan that will protect us.
I have lots of questions, and I'm sure you do, so rather we ask mine, or you ask yours?
Mike's not working.
Can comment that work? Ah, okay. So I'm gonna come to you if you would like to ask a question. If you don't have questions, I have many. So I'll come to you, see if I can stretch it over to you. It's like my fill of honey.
So I just have a good question about the last thing you said. Why did they keep playing with the power up and down? Was it stupid? They didn't know any better? The operators are sick?
I honestly don't know. I've been in control rooms for dozens, if not hundreds, of startups. I saw that once, and the operator who did that, the reason that happened at Browns Ferry, when I saw it happen in five seconds, was the operators had shifts. The new one who came in took it, didn't understand the condition of the state because it wasn't fully understanding what was going on, it shouldn't have increased power level. The operators at Pilgrim had been there for a while. It's not real clear why they took the action that they did. The training doesn't tell them to do that. The procedures don't tell them to do that. So when they winged it, they crashed. And I don't understand, having been there many, many times, I don't understand why that happened. That's why we're, that is one of the worst events last year because there's really no call for that. That's a routine operation that they're trained for. These are the same individuals that will protect us in case of a severe accident? If you can't walk and chew gum, you can't run and juggle. So that event troubled us quite a bit because it shouldn't have happened. They didn't have a good answer to that. Because, again, the procedures, their training, there's no real clear, they believed the computer, they thought they were dealing with a problem that the reactor temperature was soaring too rapidly. I don't know of anybody that I've ever worked with or seen that would have made that mistake.
Do you think they're lying?
No, I think if they're lying, they would have come up with a much better story than that. I don't think that would do it.
So let's see, I'm gonna get to you.
I think what happens is that reactors in the old days used to shut down eight to 10 times a year. Nowadays, they shut down maybe once every two years. So they're not as practiced on doing that as they used to be. They're supposed to supplement their real-time in-the-control room experience with control room simulator training. Somehow, that's not working because they had more than one individual involved in that. Somebody should have stopped that from getting as bad as it was, and it didn't happen. And there's no real good explanation for why they let that happen.
Yes, it couldn't happen but notice that you've got the title of scientist above all your heads. That title confers not only a great amount of respect to the public, but also responsibility to the public, to the public. Not just to report rumors or hearsay or speculation, but to allow data, experiment, to be the judge of all knowledge. You've pointed out some facts today that I would like to get some more details on. For example, you claim that Fukushima is gonna result in 48,000 more cancers in the Japanese.
Yes, I would refer you to the Attorney General's expert report by Dr. Yann V. A.
Okay, that's hearsay. That's hearsay. That's hearsay. What was the ecological model for that?
You haven't read the report. The report is about 100 pages, and it likes to have 100 pages.
Would you care to educate us on the report, then? What was the ecological model in the report? What was the data that was responsible for the extrapolation?
They used the MAC S2 code, which number one is outdated according to Commissioner Apotikakis of MIT, number one. And also, according to David Shannon, who wrote the foretrand, we could talk to him at ShannonConsultingNow.com, and he wrote the foretrand for both MAC S and MAC S2.
Okay, I ask because that represents an extraordinary claim because a report held limitation. An accident like Chernobyl, for example, which resulted in significantly more radiological releases, had only about, no more than 6,000 deaths of cancer, and that was thyroid cancer. Now, I could be very well interested to hear what types of cancer those 48,000 are, but how do they, how do they really rhyme with that 48,000 number? Because that's an extraordinary claim that runs against the rest of the scientific data we have on radiological exposure.
That was 44,000 latent cancers. But, you know, we could talk about this for a long time. Am I a scientist? No. Am I and can I responsibly lead you to scientists who, in fact, have done these reports that you can see yet? I feel that the Massachusetts Attorney General is responsible. He stood behind his vulnerability analysis done by Dr. He stood behind his vulnerability analysis done by Dr. Gordon Thompson, showing the vulnerability in particular of loss of water from the overcrowded pool in House and Y that is likely to lead to a fire. Step two was what would be the consequences. Dr. Jan B. A. Princeton did a consequence analysis using the MAC S2 code, which is the standard code used, not required, but approved by the NRC. And with all its lack of conservatism, and I say that based upon David Shannon, who wrote the code while at San Diego, and suggested you could talk to him, but using that code, he estimated, and all the data is in the report, of the likely consequences of the release of cesium-137.
Okay, so that release, was it of greater or less of significance than the release at Chernobyl?
Can I speak to that Chernobyl thing?
Yeah, please do.
There's a book that has been released. But I'm telling you about a book that says there's nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand people that have died from Chernobyl. So, in the New York Academy of Science.
Okay, that book has been met among the radiologic community, that book has been met with much emphasis.
I think, to argue this point about how many deaths, I find, besides the point, to be honest with you, because these accidents weren't supposed to happen. That's the point. And whether you can say six thousand or forty-eight thousand in the same breath, is, is, is it statistical? I mean, the fact is that they weren't supposed to have a tidal wave and an earthquake, and these things weren't supposed to be submerged, and they were supposed to be protected, and the container was supposed to hold information, and they weren't. I mean, you can go on and on and on. And you can pick this stuff apart, and these are good questions. I'm not suggesting that it's not a good question. I don't think it's all a good question. It's a very legitimate question. If you go to the Atomic, International Atomic Energy Agency, they will tell you that they said that the effects of Chernobyl were not six thousand deaths, it was radiophobia. That's their 25th anniversary conclusion of the major effect of Chernobyl, was fear of radiation.
Oh, I agree with that. But you're doing a risk analysis here, and to give the proper perspective on the risks involved with this plant, you have to top numbers like the number of deaths we have per kill one hour.
That's right, but I think you have, as I said, I think, and I'm not wrong with you, and I don't want to turn us into this kind of dating society, I think you have a very legitimate question, and it needs addressing. But to get this fine-grained, I'm sorry, at this point, it's not helpful, to be honest. So let me just move on here.
Any I person that was on your program, so I just wanted to introduce myself. I just wanted to ask any of you about the fact that there's a whole other seismic era that has dawned on the world. And we're having more seismic activity and stronger seismic activity, and a lot of it is projected toward the East Coast. So there's that given now, and that's been documented, and that there are these fire hazards with the cables that are submerged, there's the pipes that are leaking that they can't get to because they're built underneath the reactors. And you've got these GE Mark Ones with the seven-story-high cooling pools. And the diesel generators usually last for four to eight hours, or something like that. So given all of these things, is it possible to make these GE Mark Ones that are, many of them very close to fault lines, that are now being unearthed and discovered and becoming active? Is it possible to make them safe?
Good question.
I would say yes. I would say yes, there are ways to deal with a spent fuel hazard, just move the fuel out of the pools in the dry cans. As far as the seismic hazard, the good news is that in the early nineties, the United States Geological Survey did identify that the seismic hazard in the central and eastern United States was greater than the previously hazard, previously considered. In 1995, the NRC revised its regulations for plant owners dealing with seismic hazards. The earthquake in August of last year at the North Anna Plant was below the ground motion level, the earthquake magnitude, that North Anna, Unit Three, the proposed new reactor at North Anna, was going to be protected again, so that new hazard was translated into regulations that were applied to the new reactor. The flip side of that is that the two reactors at North Anna that were operating at the time were not designed for that hazard, as were twenty-five other reactors in the United States. The NRC took steps to protect reactors that weren't operating, but did nothing about the twenty-seven reactors that were operating, and still hasn't done anything to this day about that. So I think this plant can be safe. The question is whether this Nuclear Regulatory Commission will take those steps to achieve that outcome. That I have some doubts about, but I don't have any doubts that you could make a reactor that can be operated safely.
Sir, do you have a question?
Thanks for allowing me to ask a question. You mentioned earlier that the best-run plants are also the safest, the ones that have the, that are, you know, the bottom line of money and the safety coincide. By the same token, clearly from some of the other examples that have been brought up, some of these plants need some very serious expensive repairs to make them safe. And presumably in the marketplace, there's, you know, pushback to do that because they want to make a profit. And then you also mentioned the fact that the NRC isn't doing its job, and I keep hearing, you know, I, in college, was an anti-nuclear activist, and I work in solar and renewable energy and conservation. So, you know, I know that information from those sources is going to be slanted in one way, but fundamentally, if the organizations that are supposed to be regulating are not doing their job, and the people with this potentially very dangerous technology are trying to hide expenses, it's really worrisome.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, that is the question. What do we do about that? How do we know that we've never got it right?
Well, as pointed out, where's the NRC's not doing a good job, and I stand behind those statements. But the NRC also does a good job in some areas. It's not like they're the Keystone Cops, they mess up everything, they get their hands on it. For example, in December, in late 2010, the NRC inspectors at the Fort Calhoun Plant in Nebraska found that that plant wasn't protected against floods the way it was supposed to be. The plant owner said, wait a minute, it's been like this for thirty years, that must be good enough, thank you, but go away. The NRC listened to those arguments, but overrode them, compelled the plant owner to upgrade flood protection. That came in real handy in June of 2001, when flooding on the Missouri River turned that into an island, parked temporarily within the river. The gap that was identified the previous year was a five-year shortfall. The flooding went into that gap, so if the things hadn't been protected, the outcome could have been much, much worse. That plant remains shut down today even though the floodwaters receded, because there are a number of other problems that the NRC required to be fixed. So the NRC is not always the incompetent Sergeant Schultz messing it up. In our reports, the last two years, we've identified areas where the NRC's made very good catches, like at Fort Calhoun, and that's not an isolated case. We've also pointed out times where they didn't do very well. The goal is to try to get them to emulate the good behavior more often and avoid the bad behavior more often also.
And I would add that I think the role then is for the public to not simply say, no, that's easy, but rather also to look at today, identify what are the problems, prioritize them, such as at my reactor, the security is not at all adequate from the water, and there is none from the air. Address the problem, and then become active in trying to pressure and get change, whether it is through the regulatory process, enforcement actions, whatever, working with Congress, and identify, for example, the direct source of dent, which is very important for our type of reactors. It's a problem, they are not filtered, where the rupture is, it makes them absolutely passive. There are things, fixes, that are sensible, that can and should be done. And so I'm saying that the public, I will agree with Dave, in the fact that you can make them a lot safer, you can reduce the risk, and that is worth the effort. And it will only happen if the people are politically active, because it is going to be political pressure in a large measure that is going to bring about safer fixes, enhance our safety. Will it be over? No.
The NRC, and I'm gonna ask for a few answers. The NRC is receptive to you, you just got back to them. Do you feel that they're receptive, where you've been before, are they receptive to citizen action? Honestly?
Well, I'll give you an example. We wrote a petition for rulemaking when Seabird was beginning their process of investigation into spent fuel canisters and what, where to go. Those busters, you know, which one are we gonna use? So we did research at the same time, and what we found was that the casts were gonna be there longer than twenty years, maybe a hundred years, and there's speculation that they'd be there, but that they're only qualified for twenty years. So we spent about a year looking at all the issues in and around dry cast storage, because we had 911, we knew this was the way to go, we needed to get the fuel that was possible to move out, out for safety, and yet we were looking at the requirements that the NRC for dry cast storage, and they were lacking in technical specs and design.
So did the NRC respond positively, negatively, or not at all?
Well, it's a good story. So in 2007, we wrote the petition for rulemaking, it was accepted, which is rare. And so I will tell you that I have called once a month since 2008, and I have a record. And when I call, I have yet another answer. One of them was that UCS had managed to put it on their website, and HOS was part of the recommendations that they made. And so there were a thousand responses. So the first excuse was there were way too many responses, it was going to take months to go through. So we are now in 2012, and every month I call and I write down their response, and it was, well, now we need management buy-in. There is something really wrong with the molasses that's in this bureaucracy, because they accepted it and said it was substantially risk. These were largely issues that I spent a lot of time with NRC researchers vetting the information, going to ASME Standard Consensus Board people, and doing the best I could as a layperson to zero in on these issues, and they accepted them all, but we don't have a ruling yet. And so I think when we look at 911, and we look at Fukushima, and realize that the dry cast storage at Fukushima survived, it didn't hurt anyone, it didn't explode, and the pools were annihilated and became missiles, that I don't know what it's gonna take for a regulatory body to just turn to energy with a four-time-capacity pool on the roof of their building and say, get it out.
Ray, your experience with the NRC?
Yeah, Dave does a great job of compiling the statistics, you know, kind of, almost like baseball scores, where, you know, win, lose, whatever. And they are, they are informative. My experience, you know, is more anecdotal, okay? Working with NRC, at one point in the, in the late 1990s, after the scandal at Millstone, and the scandal at Maine Yankee, you know, political forces were brought to play because these plants were in terrible shape, the NRC inspectors were complete, completely didn't get it. After that, NRC undertook a reform of a sort, but they set, they set four goals in that, in that reform, and it was, it was increase public confidence, reduce regulatory burden, increase efficiency, and maintain safety. So you got, you got three action items, three things that are dynamic and they're moving. You're gonna increase this, you're gonna improve that, you're gonna, but safety, you're gonna maintain. And it's a clue, it's a clue, that NRC, in thirty years that I've been dealing with, has never, ever, ever, ever admitted any mistake, anywhere, except a couple of just small occasions, and then it was, it was passed in, actually in sports terms, when the Millstone was just found to be riddled with safety defects, including, you know, operational, managerial defects. The NRC chairman at the time, Dr. Shirley Jackson, said, well, we dropped the ball, we won't do it again. When Davis Bessie, in Ohio, the reactor with the hole in the head, was found that, was found that the boric acid-laced coolant in the reactor had seeped out around the penetrations for the control rods, and had concentrated, because it was boiling away on top of the reactor, evaporating, and had eaten away a cantaloupe-sized hole right down through the, whatever it is, six or eight inches of steel, such that when the maintenance people were up on top of the reactor during a refueling outage, and bumped into the control rod assemblies, one of them actually rocked back and forth, because all that was holding it was a liner, a weldment of stainless steel about three-sixteenths of an inch that just, that was never intended to be pressure-bound. It was just in there to prevent the reactor vessel from rusting from the inside.
And the NRC's reactions then was?
Well, what, the temporary chairman at the time, acting chairman, what the heck was his first name? Diaz. Mills, no one I can remember, Scandinavian name and a Cuban name. Mills Diaz, said, we dropped the ball, we won't do it again. Those are the only two admissions I've ever gotten out of the NRC, on any number of screw-ups. The thing about it is, and here's what we've done, anecdotal, this is our story, okay? There are some good people, and they try hard. In the year 1999, 1999, 2000, I served on, and it's Dave Lockton's fault, I served on the NRC's evaluation panel for their new reactor oversight process. And in the middle of one of those sessions during, during our lunch break, and I had mid-level manager sidle up and say, you know, the work that you and Dave do is really important because you raised issues that we would not be allowed to raise. And because you raised them, on occasion, we have to deal with them. Sir, well, this is, you know, it really is a mixed bag at NRC, it's a half Tom Vancap cat house. And you, you gotta understand, in this conversation, to talk about statistics on life and death stuff, you can't be, you can't be real absolute about this stuff, because your sources are questionable. And when it comes to whether or not NRC is doing a good job, it's the same thing. It's really tough, down at the street level, to be absolute about whether they're doing a good job. Here's what I've observed, though, in general, is that every reform at NRC Here's what I've observed, though, in general, is that every reform at NRC has led to less safety margin, to less conservative estimates, dose estimates, accident consequence estimates, to, you know, the pointer, you will, on the safety scale has only, has only overall moved in one direction. There have been occasional bumps where they improved this or that, but by and large, they have slid the marker in a direction of less conservation, less safety, more risk. And the Fukushima fixes that they proposed, they had three Fukushima fixes, you know, they wanna put instrumentation in spent fuel pools, they want a reliable vent, but not a filtered one, but who knows what they're talking about. And they want the plants prepared for extraordinary externalities, you know, super terna, I suppose. These are just itsy-bitsy, teeny-weeny, almost meaningless patches on systems that are extremely vulnerable. And if you take all of those wonderful risk statistics, like once in a billion years and all that, and just add up the number of BWR reactors out there in the world, and the period of time in which they've been running, and then factor in the consequences when things do go wrong, then it's all that.
With Massachusetts piece of action. And my question is concerning safety issues and the credibility of these safety questions. I mean, the, I think the most eloquent people speaking about the danger of nuclear power are the companies themselves, because they insist that they have to have protection from having to pay for any damages. I mean, the damages could be hundreds of billions, Chernobyl worth hundreds of billions, while presently, I believe the Price Anderson Act limits their liability to 112 million, which peanuts compared to the billions. So it seems to me, as long as the companies insist that these things are so dangerous that they have to have this cap on liability, I don't believe them to be safe, because I take, on that, I believe them. So my question is, what is the chance of either getting rid of the Price Anderson Act, or at the very least, raising the liability cap from 112 million to 100 billion or something? They might have to buy insurance, but you can bet those insurance companies would be on their back and would make sure these things are much safer than they are.
I've had numerous discussions on Capitol Hill trying to do either of those, and it's not very fruitful. The closest we came was in June of 2004, 2005. We were testifying before the House Energy, I think it was House Energy and Commerce Committee about new reactors, and we pointed out the Price Anderson barrier to safety improvements. And also in my panel was a vendor of the high-temperature gas-cool reactor. Chairman Issa asked that individual, would his company opt out of Price Anderson if they could? Because he had contended that his reactor was safe enough, it didn't need emergency climbing, the sirens and all that other stuff. He said he would. He thought his reactor was safe enough that it would be safer than other reactors. If nobody had Price Anderson, that would lead potential buyers to his plant because it was safer. That's the only person I've ever had that would, on the industry side, that would opt out of the company fold and is not in game anymore. But the closest I came was, but it's very difficult, there's not much interest on Capitol Hill on doing away with that. Part of the problem is that Price Anderson was just extended in 2005, so they don't have to revisit the issue for another, I think, 20 years before it comes back out. Fifteen years now from those years ago.
That Price Anderson covers damages, but it doesn't cover cleanup. That's gonna be a big gap.
Certainly.
Two-part question. So first off, I keep hearing, you know, it's a 20-year recertification process. It's, well, they are looking at it, but they can only apply it to reactors they're currently building. How is it that we can make the process of applying lessons we've learned? Because as you said, we do learn lessons. How can we make it so that we can apply these lessons in a more nimble fashion?
One of the things we've tried to do to address that question, we've had some success on the commission level, but we don't have enough votes to make it happen, is to account for unresolved safety problems in the risk analysis. Plant owners have a risk analysis for their plants. What we like to do is put in there negative, the things that, safety problems that aren't yet resolved, those don't count in the risk studies. So we like to include them in our studies. That would give incentives to plant owners to resolve those problems more quickly. If you looked across the fleet of reactors, the NRC could then have a better tally of where it should most directly apply its resources to achieve the greatest safety gains. Right now, they don't have a good accounting of where the safety problems are. So if we could get that in a consolidated database where all the pluses and minuses are better tracked, we think the industry and the NRC would be better able to triage the problems, work off the most important ones fastest, not the ones that are easiest to do. So that's our approach to try to address that, because it is the, it's the right thing to do. So that's a great question. We're trying to get it fixed. We've had some success with some local, but we have some more homework to do to get there.
Sir?
I'll try to advocate if I can, if I can, but by fair disclosure, I need to say that I spent 20 years of my career designing dry storage casks, getting them certified, getting them built, and delivering, including at Millstone site, which you know very well.
Speaking of the mic.
Does anybody on the panel know what the impact would be on the pools if you were to remove all of the fuel that was five years or older, which has been recommended in your publications?
What do you mean by, what would be the impact if you removed?
Yes, what would be the impact on the pool?
There would be a number of impacts. First of all, by removing all of that fuel that's been out of the reactor for more than five years, you would replace it with water. So there'd be more water in the pool, so the inventory was lost, or cooling of the pool is lost. There'd be more water in there, more inertia to absorb the heat that's being produced by the spent fuel in the pool, to give the operators more time to restore cooling, or provide makeup for loss of inventory. In addition, one of the problems in densely packed spent fuel pools is criticality protection. In the old days, you used geometry to protect against criticality of the fuel and nucleo-chain reaction in the spent fuel pool. When they went to high-density racks, geometry no longer provided that protection, so they added a neutron absorber to prevent criticality of the spent fuel in the pools. Aging has shown that that neutron absorber doesn't last very long. We've had problems with gravity, calling it to fall to the bottom of the pools, it's dissolved into the water itself. If you remove the fuel, you got more water, you got more space, you can spread out the surviving fuel, the remaining fuel, and reestablish geometry as protection against criticality. So you're dealing with the risk of meltdown of the fuel, of fire of the fuel in the spent fuel pool. You're reducing the probability, you're reducing the consequences, you're reducing the risk. You're also better protecting against the other casualty, which is a criticality in the spent fuel pool. So it's a, there's a lot to gain and very little to lose.
But also, if the worst happens, you would have a far less consequences because you would have less radiation going out.
That's what you said is correct in terms of making improvements, but we need to correct the fact that at Fukushima, the pools did not contribute. They survived as well as the dry cask did on the site. And I'm a fan of dry casks. However, I've run the numbers on Fukushima, and if we did what you suggested and removed all of the fuel that is five years or older, it would have reduced the heat load in that pool by less than 6%, which is a trivial amount. It would not have impacted the sequence of events that took place at all. If you take a look at the heat loads in the pools in the United States, yes, they are densely packed, but the number of assemblies is far less important than the number of kilowatts of heat that are being generated. And removing the five-year-old and older fuel has almost no impact on that heat load because of the exponential decay. The heat load is driven almost entirely by the last discharge, and you cannot remove that fuel to dry storage for at least three to five years. So you can't really do a great deal of mitigation by removing all of that fuel. I'd be happy to sell you the casks if you wanna do it, but I don't think it's going to make that much of an improvement. You're right about the neutron absorbers, you're talking about boroflex, that was another horrible mistake. That material is not being used in pools anymore. The materials that are being used now are going to stand up, they're solid materials, and they're not going to fall apart the way that boroflex did.
I'd like to respond to that in a few cases, because I disagree with just about everything. Fukushima, the spent fuel pools did survive, but you gotta recall that the reactor buildings blew up, which provided pathways for helicopters to drop water into the spent fuel pools and water cannons to shoot water from below. Hopefully, in our reactors, we don't blow up reactor buildings in order to provide the cooling makeups to the spent fuel pools. That's not the way to solve the problem. Second of all, yes, the heat load is, I do agree with this, the heat load is dominated by the fuel that's been coming out of the reactor in the last five years. But again, the fuel that you're taking out, I agree with that, that was the one thing I agree with. And Fukushima did have a problem, I did agree with that also. But taking out the older fuel, you're, again, you're replacing it with water. Fukushima only had about one reactor core's worth of fuel. That's far less than reactors in the United States have. The average reactor in the United States according to the NRC has more than three times as much fuel in the spent fuel pool. So it's, there are a number of reasons that Fukushima's lessons learned, unless you designed the plants to blow up the reactor buildings, can't be attributed to reactors in the United States. In addition, even if you're absolutely true that the heat load isn't changed at all, let's say it doesn't change at all, which isn't true, but let's say that.
Less than 10%.
I'll give it away, it doesn't change at all, there's no change at all. Removing the fuel out of the pool reduces the consequences, as Mary said. If there is a problem, the fact that there's fewer fuel assemblies in the pool means that the radioactive cloud is much, much smaller. That's the consequence part of the risk equation. Probability may be the same. I think it improves that you reduce the probability, but let's fix it for a moment. You're significantly reducing the consequences. When you multiply those together, you significantly reduce the risk. So I'll buy a lot of your cask if the nuclear waste fund will be available, it'll better protect Americans.
They said that it's supposed to be 10, 10 meters of water in those fuel in the pools in Fukushima? It's supposed to be 10, I think, it's 30 something, 40 feet of water. And one of the pools has 60 centimeters, which is about 2 feet. That's supposedly the latest.
Above the top of the pool.
Above the back top of the pool.
I didn't hear the question, but there's about 45 feet of water in the spent fuel pool.
Supposedly, it's supposed to be like 45, but...
You're right, there's 45 feet in there.
But I heard, above the fuel.
There's gotta be at least 22 feet above the fuel in order to like...
I heard that in one, I'm just asking a question, I understand, a few days ago, that one would be like just 60, 70 meters above.
Louder.
That there may be just 60 centimeters of water above the spent fuel pool of one of the reactors.
I haven't seen that.
No?
Okay. Perspective on the question of emptying the spent fuel pools to the degree possible. And that is, I think that by and large, most of these arguments are informed by the assumption that spent fuel pools are going to leak, and that water can be replaced, and so on. And, you know, we have, we have two reactors that we're talking about here tonight, Pilgrim and Vermont Yankee, which are Fukushima-style reactors in the sense that the spent fuel pool is located some 80 feet up in the air, next to the outside wall of the reactor. NRC did a study, and I helped, I'm glad to say, back in the year 2000, Nuret 1738, in which they decided that the outside walls of the reactor building would, and that is also what is called a secondary containment, would present no substantial obstacle to aircraft penetration. The question of seismic durability came up. NRC has a consultant in, Dr. Robert P. Kennedy, attachment three to Nuret 1738. He talks about Vermont Yankee's spent fuel pool failure mode. And he says the gross structural failure mode would be an out-of plane shear failure of the cool floor slap. Okay, you got that? Okay? This is a big open, but Dr. Kennedy goes further. And he says possibly the floor would drop out. That's a 40 by 40 by 40, 40 by 40-foot hole in the floor. You're not gonna replace the water. In fact, you're not gonna get anywhere near the reactor should something like that happen, because of the, because there'd be no shielding whatsoever for the radioactive material. At Vermont Yankee, when loading the dry casks, the crane brakes failed. Fortunately, the cask was over the loading deck, not over the spent fuel pool itself. And the brakes didn't grossly fail, but they failed to the point that the cask descended whether the operators wanted it to or not down to the loading deck. And they were very proud that that accident happened when the cask was not over the pool. We found out a few days later that what they had forgotten to do was to put the travel limiters on the crane that would automatically prevent it from going over the pool once it was loaded and lifted. NRC's analysis on this says that that depth of water in the pool would not substantially slow down that cask, 100-ton cask, were dropped. Now, that puppy's 11 feet diameter and would punch an 11-foot diameter hole to the bottom of the pool. So the deal is, if you can take the fuel out and put it in casks where you have a limited number of assemblies in each cask, all surrounded by a couple of inches of steel and 20 inches of concrete, there's no accident that we can envision where there would be a significant propagation of that accident from cask to cask to cask. But an accident in the spent fuel pool, propagation would be through, potentially through whatever fuel was in there, up to a few thousand.
I know, I see that we know all these problems in the past of all these, and now we're building two new ones down in, what's it, Jenkinsville, South Carolina? The hole's already been dug for that. And I was curious how they, with all this history of problems with it, that they got that to pass down in South Carolina? What is it? And they say it's supposed to be something, I haven't read much on it lately, but they were saying that, oh, it's gonna be safer, and this and that and the other thing, and it's been years since we've had a nuclear power plant build in this country. How did that one slip in? That's all I need to know. I know it's fallen on deaf ears with the NRC, I know. Thank you.
Well, when we were discussing this 10 years ago with energy management, energy-owned boat Pilgrim, Vermont Yankee now, and we were talking about the possibility of building new plants, and what the manager said to me was, they're going to be built, and they're going to be built in the South. They had, they had never experienced the kind of reception that they got here in the U.S. The South has been amenable to it. One comment by one energy manager was, well, if you come from where we come from, down in Chemical Alley, nuclear looks pretty good.
And most certainly, the experience on the relicensing front is nothing like anybody's seen. Between Pilgrim, Vermont, starting up at Seabrook, New York Attorney General at Indian Point, I think the message has gotten out, no, don't go west, go south. It's a matter of money. It's a matter of money.
Nuclear renaissance, a matter of money, is that going to happen here?
Well, I think, I think there's already been a nuclear renaissance revival, maybe easier word for me to pronounce, in the United States. In that, if you look at the 104 reactors we have in the United States, they've basically been in operation since 1996. No new reactors have joined the fleet since then. If you look at their output since that time, it's significant. I think it's equivalent to 15 or 16 new reactors of 1,000 megawatts electric each. They've achieved that increased production by increasing the capacity factor, how much of the time the plants run. And they've also increased that increase in output by increasing the power levels of which the plants operate. So those 15 or 16 virtual new reactors has been the nuclear renaissance that I think we've seen in the United States. The downside for the industry from that success is it pushed back the need for replacement electricity. So it's difficult to justify building a new plant when you run the existing plants for a longer period of time at higher power levels. So if they hadn't have been so successful renewing the licenses, improving the output from the plants, would have hastened the need for replacement power, be it in nuclear or non-nuclear sources. But that success essentially pushed off the need for new reactors and killed or crippled, slowed down, impaired the nuclear renaissance of new reactors in the United States.
Sir. I don't know, it's because we're at MIT, but so far we've been focusing almost entirely on sort of the technical aspects of nuclear energy, which are intriguing, to say the least. But I would just ask a question about emergency planning and evacuation planning, that sort of thing. I came, I live on Cape Cod. All of Cape Cod is within about 35 miles of Pilgrim. At Fukushima, when Fukushima happened, the NRC advised all Americans within 50 miles to leave. And yet, on Cape Cod, there is no radiological emergency plan whatsoever, none, zero, zip. The only, only, there is a plan for livestock on Cape Cod to feed it stored hay. And there is also, the plan for the 10-mile zone includes closing both bridges on Cape Cod so that people have to stay there. So I guess my question is kind of vague, but I'd just like to hear about, you know, what has been done since Fukushima to increase radiological emergency planning? Thank you.
Well, I can answer that question and also circle back to the question Bruce asked earlier about NRC's receptiveness. In summer of last year, you see this issue to report on what we thought the lessons learned from Fukushima were. And one of the recommendations, one of the key recommendations was, we need to revisit emergency planning and look at site-specific. Don't draw an arbitrary boundary of 5 miles, 10 miles, 20 miles. Each site is unique. If there's a large population center 1 mile further past wherever you draw the line, that's not right. So what we recommended was you look at each site, what its particular characteristics were, and make sure that the people around that site were adequately protected. The receptiveness, the NRC agreed that that was an issue we wanted additional consideration and added it to their list. That's one of the 34. With help from people in this room and elsewhere, we can help the NRC decide that they do need to change that and go beyond 10 miles and not maintain the status quo. So it's a work in progress. With your help and others, we can get that done right. So we're hopeful we'll get that outcome. It's going to take some more work. Look, it's an issue, the good news is the NRC didn't just reject it outright. So it's on the table. Our work is to keep it on the table so that it comes to the right outcome.
And I think also, if there is pressure on states, because this is one area that the state has some authority. The states can put in place emergency plans that are, as long as they're more conservative than those required by the federal government and FEMA in their guidance. Quite clearly, Massachusetts, as it was with potassium iodide, which is another key issue in planning, took a lead. And it was a message that has gone across to a lot of other states. And so I think it would be a double play. Pressure on the NRC and at the same time, pressure on our state to move forward as it should, and the two will react with one another.
We should say that you concerned scientists have an effort for the 10 states that will need to put pressure to citizens to go to the state legislature and talk about these issues. I would take one more question and then we'll hear each person.
Sun is a great sanitizer. What is your feeling about the adequacy and independence, A, of congressional oversight? And is it likely to be different under the Democrats than under the Republicans? Secondly, what about the independence and accuracy of the media coverage of these issues? Anticipating your answers, is this time for citizens, social control of the industry rather than the assumption we've been going on, which is, let's say, make the NRC work better? Is it time for citizens to sit in oversight of this technology?
We have some serious issues in order to take more control. And one of them is that the industry has made real progress legally in limiting the access to real data and real information from the plant. The NRC now, and it's part of technology and it's the future and it's going to be the way it is, but the NRC now accesses all online plant information and data through Ascentrex, the computer access program. Because they don't own the data, means that it's not in the public domain and that they can't share with the public what it is that they're finding. So we've had to pursue FOIA's to get information that's largely been dependent on communication between people and memos or reports that are internal reports. But it is limiting our ability to have, and you know, the NRC is speaking all the time about transparency, but in reality, this, you know, we have scientists in the room who want to assess for themselves. And for us, with a new problem at Seabrook, we have an expert and we cannot provide him a lot of the raw data for him to assess. So this is a real problem. And what we find over and over again is that the industry continues to put pressure legally on the nuclear regulatory commission through their legal people to have more propriety. So that's one way that it's getting hard to know the truth. One of the things that is very burdensome in terms of the regulatory process, and we need to figure this out, Seabrook right now has 920 corrective actions backlog. So if you think about plant deficiencies and operational issues that sometimes are definitely initiative at the industry, they see something wrong and they put it in the corrective action program largely because of the NRC. There is no possible way that anybody can, can know in any detail, 920 of these situations and know their, their status and whether they're closed properly. There aren't enough staff at the NRC to do this work. And so a lot of it is the responsibility of the operators to close them. And they may be closing the same corrective action over and over again. We don't know. The other thing that we're seeing so often is an exception to a regulation, exception to a rule. There are alternatives to the rules. I throw all these by Dave Lockbaum, and they happen at Seabrook because he has the insight and judgment to know whether this is a reasonable alternative, that the plant is actually asking for a design change that is in reason. But when you put it all together, when you put all the performance, corrective actions, the exceptions to the rules, the alternatives, you're no longer really working the way the plant was designed. And if there's a cause and effect between one change that's been allowed, you've made an allowance here, you've increased the pressure there, the cause and effect, I think, is very hard to track, both from the regulator and the industry, from the engineers of the plant. And so, you know, these are design changes and issues that I think are potentially the real safety issue that I think we need to work at for day one.
Two, here's some things of the agency. They were instrumental in identifying the millstone problems that led to that plant being turned around and changes to the NRC's oversight regime as well. So there's been a lot of reports over the years. In recent years, the NRC's inspector general has not kept up that pace due to some changes and some other things. What we've talked to Congress about to deal with low probability, high consequence events like NASA, with the shuttle problems, Deepwater Horizon, is increasing the funding for the inspector generals. Those are the agency's consciences, if you will, that help them, help Congress since they report their results to the Congress, to see whether that agency is really fulfilling its mission to protect the American public, not just the NRC, but across the board. We've recently interested the United States Government Accountability Office in looking into what the pluses and minuses of that recommendation are. That study, we think, will be started soon, about sometime next year will be reported to Congress. Then the role is to get the Congress to implement the recommendations made by GIO. But I think, I think we've gotten a couple steps down the right path. I hope we'll get to that end. And I think that will address some of what the first part of your question was.
I could talk about the media just for very briefly here because my judgment is harsher than David's. Nuclear issues are very nerdy. Intensely, nuclear issues are very nerdy. They're intensely complex. And they're hard to communicate, not just to the general public, but to your editors and producers, and sell them on the idea of doing a story because they've got to commit a lot of resources to doing those stories. Media is mostly reactive, right? That's the way we just kind of are, you know? And, and so to do a story looking out, it's not that we don't know these issues, but to look at it is very difficult. Very difficult to sell inside the organization, very difficult to communicate to the public in general. And they're very expensive, as they say. I mean, if you listen to the Marketplace, I just heard it the other day, which is a pretty darn good public radio show, I think, but their sponsorship is by the Nuclear Energy Institute, which is brand new, you know? So if you've got a concern about public radio, I'd suggest you put your money where Amal Sarr and do something about that. So Ray, I want to wrap up here with a couple of things. Mary, Debbie, some round finish ideas here, because we haven't talked about things like tritium, we haven't talked about, you know, Vermont and the legal issues involved there. I mean, there's so much here, obviously.
Think, think nothing of it.
You know, I mean, there's a lot going on.
This goes to this question that was raised up here with respect to congressional oversight. Peter Bradford, who's a former NRC commissioner, said there are three parties in control in Washington, there's Republicans, Democrats, and a nuclear party. And a nuclear party is really an across-the-isle party. You can find a few anti-nuclear congressional persons who are outspoken and they're concerned for nuclear safety. But there's a raft of them that are adamantly pro-nuclear, they're vociferous, they really do good work for their donor supporters on pushing nuclear issues. And most recently, in the Vermont Yankee relicensing, we had Jeff Bingman, we had a crew, and they happened to be Republicans at that time, that wrote to the NRC and they were totally indignant because this licensing was dragging on and what was wrong with the NRC. Now, the fact is that we had, we had real technical issues that had to be resolved. And, you know, NRC put their foot on the accelerator and Karabing was done and over with. In fact, on the eve of Fukushima. That was meaningful to us. Well, it is what it is. We had, at Man Yankee, we had a debate over residual radiation levels after the cleanup. And EPA had recommendations of 15 exposure units a year and, and NRC had a rule that allowed 25. We were pushing 10 because it had been done in other states and why not? But the EPA guys, in this big debate we had, they, they put on a really wimpy performance. And then afterward, they said to me, we're getting on a plane tonight and we're going to Washington. And we're going to be appearing before Senator Domenici's committee. He's a pro-nuclear advocate. And he is controlling our budget. And he has threatened to chop it in half if we don't get in line. It was that simple. So, you know, I guess, in the big dialogues we have, more famous forum here in New England, the town meetings, it's the time that we really need to speak to our representatives about, you know, what our sentiments are on this. You know, it's clear they hadn't gotten the message from the marketplace. Nuclear energy is a marketplace dog.
How many millions did NEI use for PR? Was it like 8 million?
Oh, I, you know, I don't know, but the money goes across the arse.
Sorry.
Energy, Energy Corporation, which is the second largest nuclear operator in the country, was a major donor for Hillary Clinton's primary campaign. And Exelon, which is the largest, was the biggest supporter of Obama that you could find. And, you know, so it's, money is evenly distributed, the influence is extremely powerful. And I think really, really, real answer is to talk it out. This meeting's perfect in that respect.
I'm in smaller communities where are nuclear plants, we're not in Boston or Cambridge. And resources are limited and we don't have investigative reporters. They're assigned rapidly to try to wrap their arms around an issue. And we find that when we give them a list of experts to tap, they're not comfortable enough because it's a technical area and they don't have the investigative reporter base to feel comfortable with the comment that's going to be given to them. Can they vet this? But they don't call Dave Lockbaum or Arnie Gunderson or an expert. And we keep putting it out there and they don't. So what happens is, the story gets told in very broad terms. They ask for a comment from the industry. The PR guy makes, you know, an overall statement of assurance. And the last quote of your article always is from the plant. And it leaves you with, you know, the advocacy group says, but the plant says, don't worry, you can sleep tonight. And it always sort of ends on that note. And so it's almost like a format, is that, you know, if we are asked for comment, the industry always seems to have the last word and a point of assurances and not of any challenge to the technical issue that came up.
Let me just say, it takes me 100 hours on average to do one minute of investigative reporting. So it's expensive. It just is. I mean, it's, and the other thing is about this question of balance, you know, it's very weird, you know, because it's like saying, well, the world is round and they say it's round and they say it's flat, so it must be oval, you know? It's like, and it's, and if you look at the way journalists just kind of be driven today, it's that, it's that. We got an oval world. That's neither here nor there. Last words, because I've really enjoyed this. Ray, Mary, David, you have last word?
Yeah, I started out by talking about three things we've learned over 35 years. I want to talk about a fourth thing we learned. One is, I need to listen to these people. Listening to Ray talk about three parties, we also think there's a three-party involved, but it's a little bit different than Ray's. We look at the operating licenses the NRC issues to nuclear power plants and the regulations that the NRC establishes as being three-party contracts between the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, the plant owners, and the public. That contract protects the plant owners from the NRC requiring more stringent and often more costly measures than are those.
more costly measures than are those established by the regulations and the operating licenses. By the same token, that contract should protect the public from the NRC accepting less than the safety levels defined by the regulations. That's what upsets us when we see forty-seven reactors that don't meet fire protection regulations for three decades, seismic issues that are known to be greater than the plants are designed for but nothing being done for. We think the NRC is breaching its contract with the American public. We don't see many examples of the NRC requiring more than the regulations require, so the NRC needs to also stop cheating the American public by accepting less.
Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you very much.
Great way to start.
Mary, Ellen? Mary, you've got one thing to say. Hang on.
Yes. Um, I respect Barney Frank a great deal. He had a huge amount to say, as always, uh, when he was interviewed and what he learned. He was asked a question of the influence of the huge and growing, uh, amount of money on decision-making. And he said, do bet, it's there, it's growing daily. However, we all have to be elected. And so therefore, if our constituents are putting a lot of pressure on us, that will outweigh the amount of money in the day. And so again, I think the public rightfully, and certainly all of us, have gone through it. How many more days should we beat our heads against the wall for what? Should we shred our documents and reports before we mail them or not? Will it even make a difference? It does make a difference. And if people give up, which I'm afraid the energy which is developing around Pilgrim by the help of the Union Concerned Scientists, by the focus of the media during license renewal, I'm afraid that some will say, well, look what happened. They had, uh, ongoing litigation, they played by the rules, they had their experts, they spent a freaking personal fortune on it, and then, huh, we're tired of it. We have decided, energy won, and so we're all taking our ball and going home. Okay? That's what they're telling the commissioners to do. I trust they won't do it. If, God forbid, that happens, we too have to go into federal court. I hope the public understands. That doesn't erase the safety concerns. That doesn't mean you're powerless. You're only powerless if you say, or refuse to say, I'm not going to the back of the bus. That you keep active, you keep educating the media, you have to do a lot of work for them. You keep educating new legislators. They haven't got a cloak. And make sure that it becomes an important issue, which they know they have to get into because their constituents are getting into it. The only way we will see true action is by the hard work of the real experts like Dave Lotbom, but also of the people like myself, who, and like you, and you, and you, who are sitting in this audience, to take the time for your own personal safety.
Thank you very much.